Hey Buzz, is that you?
Hey Pam, Jeremy's on the phone.
Jeremy, thank you. You can hear us okay?
I can hear you great, yep.
Perfect, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
We'll go ahead and call this regular scheduled commissioner meeting to order, but we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with our first set of public comment. Any comment from the public? We'll move to number four, verification of posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on July 14th between the hours of eight and nine at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Was there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are changes to the agenda. First of all, item number six, we didn't get the minutes listed, so you'll have to, we withdrawn that item. And also, new business H should be withdrawn because it's duplicative of what's going on in new business G.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
I move to approve the agenda as revised.
I'll second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We'll begin with our first appointment, A. Which is BLM update.
Commissioners, thank you. John Mitchell, Carson City District, BLM. I have just a few updates for you this, this time. We'll start off with our geothermal projects, the Diamond Flat project. We are currently in the process of writing and reviewing the preliminary EA. Working with our state historic preservation office, we received some comments from them, went back to the proponent and requested some additional data to be able to answer some of those ship oh questions and comments. Once those comments have been addressed, we will submit the draft preliminary EA, they will submit the draft preliminary EA to the BLM, we'll review it and go out for public comment. The Wabusa project, the contractors working through our comments, once they've addressed our comments, they'll submit to us for review and incorporate, and then we will incorporate those into the EA. Dixie Meadows, we're still working with the Fish and Wildlife Service on that biological assessment. And then last but not least, the Coyote Canyon Exploration, Ormatas collecting baselines. And then we were reviewing some of the baselines that they had previously submitted. As far as the NDAA FRTC, we're still trying to hire that project lead to kind of help alleviate some of the workload on the field office. And then we will be filling a couple of the positions under that lead, so we'll probably bring on some of those positions before the lead's actually hired. The Wild Horse and Bureau Program, so the Clan Alpine Horse Gather EA went out for a 30-day public comment period that closed July 17th. We are now working through the public comments that we received, making sure that we're addressing those comments in the environmental assessment. The Varro Fiber Optic, I need to go back one second for the Wild Horse and Bureau Program. We are also approved for a Desatoya HMA horse gather. It's a maintenance gather just to bring the population back down to low AML, so we'll be conducting that this fall. We were funded and approved for it, so. Just a maintenance gather. The Varro Fiber Optic line, so July 11th, we held field visits with our local tribes. And the BLM and cooperators have provided comments to the draft biological baseline report. The Green Link Project, those are the same slides. I didn't receive a report from the, from the state office. If I get that update or report before our next meeting, I'll, I'll send it out to the commission. The County Line Project is the new one that we received. It sits on the border of Anai in Mineral County. It's a mining project. And they're, they're looking at, kind of restarting that project and doing some mining activity out there. A couple of other projects that we had going on, the Vegas Torino Project, or the, the Vora Fallon SRP, it was a race event held last weekend, was completed. The Sierra Trail Dog SRP event, it was a non-race event down by Hawthorne, was also held last weekend. The Bench Creek Range Improvement EA went out for public comment, for a 30-day public comment period, and that closes July 21st. And then the Payne Grazing Permit Renewal, which is down by Hawthorne as well, we are working on the preliminary EA for that. And then last but not least, my detail was scheduled to end at the end of the month. It's been extended for at least another month, trying to provide time for the office to conduct interviews and, and get somebody in the position, reduce kind of the, the vacancy time in the position. So I'll be with you for at least one more meeting after this. And that's all I have for you.
Any questions from border staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We have volunteers that work through the museum that have been working on, I'm sure you're aware of all this, but just to, to get confirmation or not, we have volunteers that give tours to the hidden caves. And as part of the BLM process or updated process, folks have to, I think, go through background check and hiring protocols with the BLM like any other employee. And now those are in Carson City, where previously, where we now have to have those volunteers travel to Carson City. When I talked about the issue, these are volunteers, we are just trying to get them on the, the approved list to do the tours. We were told that they had to pay their way and go to Carson City and go through this employee enrollment thing. And then when I talked to Kim about it, she said we could use some existing grant that we have that would basically pay the per diem. Personally, I'm hoping that we could put everybody in one vehicle and maybe cheapen it up and get the biggest bang for our buck. Have you had any conversations about this? Because we've had a, we're down on numbers of volunteers, as I understand it, and it's because we can't get through the process of getting them to Carson City and getting them certified, employee checked, whatever that is.
Right, yeah, yeah, so the
It's reading about a legislative session. John, it's that flashing microphone?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Osagara, for the record, was Strategies 360. I've got a 25-page report. I'll start with page one. Just, just joking, just joking. But I would like to kind of give you just a general overview of this report. I think that you have it, but just so that you have an idea, I've condensed it to one page. But in that report, you'll see that the folks that are working for you over at the legislature, there's 10 of us over there. And we were kept quite busy this time. You also will see that you have all of our cell phone numbers and our emails there for any follow-up questions that you might have on any of these areas. You know, I would say this legislative, legislative session was somewhat of a return to normal, because in, you know, 2021, we were still in the midst of COVID and we were not in the building, so we didn't get back in that building until about 30 days prior to the end of session. So interestingly enough, a lot of legislators hadn't been lobbied, hadn't seen people live and in person, and so we came into the 2023 session with that being a little bit of an unusual occasion for them, and so that made it interesting. What also made it interesting was that in 2000, or in 2021, we were cutting budgets, right? Because we had no idea what, how long this COVID thing was going to go on, what was going to happen, where the revenues were going to come from. And so there was a lot of cutting being done. Now you come into 2020, 23, we're flush with money, we're almost $2 billion to the, to the, to the black, and everybody had their hand out. So it was a, it was a different kind of session as far as that goes. Again, just as a refresher, a lot of legislators were new. A huge percentage were new, and so there was a lot of education that needed to be done and a lot of catch-up, because even those folks that were new in 2021, we really didn't have a lot of time to talk to them, because we couldn't talk to them in person. So that was, that made this really interesting. All the standard issues, you know, that you would think about, education, healthcare, public safety, those, all those things were at the forefront, the environment, elections, and you'll see a couple pages where we kind of detail all of that information on what kind of bills passed on that. Then specifically on page 11 of that report, and that's what I'll spend the most of my time here going over, is just specifically to Churchill County. You'll notice that the final 12 pages of this report are, is where we start out at. So we started out tracking 104 bills for Churchill County. You know, that got narrowed down in the end to just a few, but just so the general public knows, there's a lot of work that goes into tracking this legislation. And your staff is instrumental in helping us decide, you know, what would affect Churchill County, you know, either positively or negatively. I will also mention, just so that everybody is aware, the legislature was comprised of both houses being Democrat and the Republican, or governor being Republican. The Senate was one vote, vote short of a supermajority, and the Assembly had a supermajority. So that made for an interesting dynamic. The governor vetoed 75 bills, and that was by far a record. The last time even anything close to that was 48 bills, and that was in 2009, when Governor Gibbons vetoed 48 bills. 32 of the bills came back in the period of time where the legislature could potentially override them before the end of the session, and they didn't override any bill. So the rest of, the remaining bills, the remaining 43 bills will come up next legislative session. Why that's important to you is there is a distinct possibility that both houses of legislature will be supermajority Democrat in the next legislative session. So there is the potential that 43 of those bills could be potentially overridden come 2025. So I just, this isn't a political conversation, it's just kind of stating the facts of, you know, what, what the potentials are. I think your legislative team did a great job meeting with legislators. We developed strong relationships with stakeholders. A bit of focus on healthcare, as, as you all know. We had some important healthcare bills for the rural areas, and I'll just focus on three really quickly. AB 432, which was a tele, telemedicine services for optometry, came from one of your former colleagues here, which I will just say publicly for the record, he did an amazing job over at the legislature. You know, we had a discussion prior to the legislature, and he said it's going to be challenging being in the minority, and especially in the superminority. And he did a great job working with both, both sides of the aisle and actually passing quite a few bills. So I'd like to, you know, give him kudos for that kind of work. Because quite frankly, there were some bills that would have negatively affected you, and if he didn't have a good relationship over there at the legislature, that you, you might not have gotten the same result. So I thought that was wonderful. There was SB 118, which approx, provided approximately $4 per capita of funding for public health agencies to address community needs and priorities. This was that essential bill for implementing the Central Nevada Health District that will serve the citizens of Churchill County. I think this was a massive win for the rural communities, and I think it'll improve healthcare funding for our state, but especially here. There was another, another bill that I thought was pretty important, it was SB 336. And that was to allow certified registered nurse anesthesiasts to administer controlled substances. Again, just allowing some more delivery of healthcare in the rurals. There were some airport bills, AB 58, which was, that was to amend it, was amended to include language to include rural airports in the Nevada Air Service Development Commission. So now we have a representative there, so we can decide how that money goes out. There was a water bill, and I know that we supported a water bill, and you all know how difficult water bills are to pass. Unfortunately, AB 387 did not pass, and I can just tell you that there was a plethora of people involved in that, a full-packed room, and just couldn't come to consensus, unfortunately. I'll tell you that the, ironically, maybe the most controversial bill was the sundown siren bell. Having grown up here in Fallon, I'm very familiar with our noon siren and our emergency siren. Unfortunately, there are some other counties that use that siren for different purposes and ignored the will of the legislature in the last legislative session, and that was a, a very heated battle. Does that mean I only get three minutes? You're done? That, we spent an inordinate amount of time on that bill. But fortunately, we were able to come up with a compromise that allowed Churchill County to continue to use our noon siren and our emergency siren for what it was designed for. And so ironically, that was a very controversial bill. And finally, I just, in conclusion, I'd say that, you know, Governor Lombardo was a very rural-friendly governor. I think that the 82nd session of the legislature was a successful one for rural communities. Like I said, we saw issues that looked at addressing issues in healthcare, aviation, education, water, and, you know, but for one or two things, I think that we were pretty successful in either mitigating potential problems or passing those that were good for Churchill County. So I tried to take it down to one page from 25.
Any questions from border staff?
Just thanks so much for your representation and working with us. We appreciate it, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll move next to C, approval of the updated amended Churchill County Indigent Defense Plan for FY 24. Jacob?
Thank you, commissioners. Jacob Summer for the record. In the interests of judicial and commissioner economy, I think I'll just say that this was a, an indigent defense plan that was approved already based on the provisions of NRS 171.188. We needed to add some references to the plan regarding the municipal court and how that would be handled in relation to those statutory provisions. Those have been inserted now within that plan, and I'm sure you've reviewed and looked it over. Most of the substantive changes are found on page eight, and then a few other pages in other locations throughout the report. It doesn't meaningfully change the plan of Churchill County, but it does include references to the municipal court to be in compliance. Once this plan, provided that it's approved, we will forward it to the Department of Indigent Defense, where they will then approve it at their board level. We don't anticipate any problems, but those are the changes that are inserted within the updated plan as you see it.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Churchill County Indigent Defense Plan for fiscal year 2024.
I'll go ahead and second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is D, the first reading, consideration of possible action, Bill 2023-A, ordinance 32, and ordinance amending provisions of Title 16, Consolidated Development Code of the Churchill County Code, which amends the use table for zoning districts to clarify the zones in which certain vehicles and vehicle accessories may be sold, establishes the permitting process under which certain vehicles and vehicle accessories may be sold, and provides for other matters related thereto. Chris?
Mr. Chair, I'll provide an update on this item. Chris is welcome to, to fix anything I missedate. Mr. Chair, this is an ordinance that essentially adds granularity to our use table. Presently, we only have two sections that relate to vehicle sales, large and small vehicles. Small vehicles being essentially anything that's a passenger vehicle, motorcycle, et cetera. And large vehicles running the gamut from construction vehicles, semi-trailers, to RVs and motorhomes and campers. At this time, small vehicles are allowed in the C1, C2, and industrial zones. Large vehicles are only allowed by special use permit in the C2 and industrial zones. Because large vehicles include RVs and campers and trailers of that sort, presently, those items are not allowed to be sold in the C1 district under any circumstance. There's no way to get a variance or anything that would allow for those sales, because they're just prohibited by the, the code. And so this amendment creates three sections instead of just the two. We would continue to have a standard vehicle and replacing the small vehicle section. This would be passenger vehicles, motorcycles, ATVs, and the like. Then we'll have a specialized section that would do RVs, campers, dump trailers, horse trailers, and things of that nature. And then the construction vehicle section for commercial vehicles, semi-trailers, cargo containers, and large construction equipment. The new specialized section is going to be done by administrative special use permit, which is sort of an intermediary with the regular special use permit. It would go in front of the planning director for approval instead of going through the board. It's a little bit faster, but still allows for conditions to be placed on a permit to identify any issues that may come up with this particular property. This is the first reading, so we can't make any vote on approving this ordinance today. It does have to be set for a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled commission agenda. I would note for the record, the planning department, or Planning Commission, did review this ordinance at our hearing last week. this ordinance at our hearing last week and has recommended it for adoption.
Anything there, Chris?
No. Joe has stated all. Just a quick update, the standard vehicle would still simply be reviewed with a zoning review, so as long as it met the code, it would be approved with just a review. And the reason for the administrative review, as Joe had mentioned, it still allows us to place certain conditions as far as age of trailer sales or location of where they want to put them on the lot. It gives us a little bit of latitude to have some influence on that. And then the commercial and the construction vehicles, because of their size, we still don't permit those in the C1, and they would still need to have a special use permit going from the Planning Commission. So, thank you.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for August 3, 2023.
I move to set a public hearing for August 3, 2023.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved, and I'll go ahead and read the title and the summary here. An ordinance amending provisions of Title 16 Consolidated Development Code of the Churchill County Code. Summary, this ordinance amends provisions of Title 16 concerning the consolidation. Development Code, it amends the use table for zoning districts to clarify the zones in which certain vehicles and vehicle accessories may be sold, establishes the permitting process under which certain vehicle and vehicle accessories may be sold, and provides for other matters Next, we'll move to E, approval of the Churchill County Debt Management Policy for Fiscal Year 2023-24. This is Sherry.
Okay, I'm going to present to you today the debt management policy. The reason for our policy is because it's mandated from the state and because we want to make sure that we can meet all our obligations and long-term requirements for capital improvement facilities and to get favorable interest rates, so we have a good debt-to-revenue ratio. The key elements of the policy is to protect our bond ratings so that we can be in compliance with NRS, and also that if we do need debt, that we're able to go out and get it. Right now, we don't have any general obligation debt. And so, right now, we're just using our revenues to pay our debt. And this is what our debt looked like as of June 30, 2023. We had, for the jail, we have a balance, those are the balances for the two revenue bonds that were issued for the jail, and then we also have the civic center loan, and that's the balance. So those totaled, this is general governmental bonds totaling approximately $21 million. And then during the fiscal year, we incurred a new debt for the USDA redundant well water in the Water Utility Fund, which had a great interest rate of 1.5% interest, and that balance is approximately $550,000. Then down there is the CCCOM, which were done in the previous fiscal years. So our total outstanding debt was $36,170,757. And these are our debt payment requirements for what we paid last year and for the fiscal year we just entered into, to cover our debt. The total is approximately $2.3 million, including CCCOM. And then what do we pay this debt with? It's collateralized by our 0.25% sales tax infrastructure rate, 15% of our federal pelt, and 15% of our geothermal rent. So, we don't use all our revenue. Those are the only ones that are securing those two debts, the jail and the civic center. And then the, excuse me, CCCOM and Utility Fund are paid off by user fees. And then we have possible projects, so we want to make sure that we're pretty fluent, that we could actually get some more loans if we needed to, to do some of these future projects. These are just general idea projects. And then also in the packet, there was the actual debt policy that will be going to the debt committee and then forwarded on to the state. So I'm just asking you to review it and approve it, and then I will take it to the debt committee and give it to the state. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Churchill County's debt management policy for fiscal year 2023-2024 and to provide copies to the Department of Taxation and the Local Debt Management Commission as required by statutes.
I'll second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next on the agenda is F, ratification of a comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management on the Preliminary Environmental Assessment for the Clan Alpine Horse Gather. Hi, Jeremy, are you on?
Hi, I'm, can you hear me all right?
We can.
All right. Chairman, good afternoon. For your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Before you is a comment letter that we got in, in a timely manner. Unfortunately, this was a 30-day comment period, so this is before you for ratification today. The letter is consistent with our scoping comments that we provided several months ago on the same project, and consistent with Chapter 12 of the master plan. Essentially, what we're doing is supporting a proposed wild horse gather in the Clan Alpine herd management area. The current model population is almost 1,700 horses, and the appropriate management level ranges from 612 to 979, so significantly over population. We indicate in the letter that we support the action alternatives and do not support the no-action. We also advocate for getting the low AML as quick as possible. Chairman, that's a quick rundown on the letter, but I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the specific items that we addressed.
Any comments or questions for Jeremy from border staff? Any public comment? All right, thank you, Jeremy. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to ratify the comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management on the Preliminary Environmental Assessment for the Clan Alpine Horse Gather.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you. Looks like, again, we have Jeremy here for the approval of a comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management on the Preliminary Environmental Assessment of the Binge Creek Ranch Range Improvements Project. Jeremy?
Chairman, for your record, Jeremy Drew with Resource Concepts. This is one that we caught right, so this is not due until Friday. So this letter is before you for possible approval. The Binge Creek Ranch has been working for, I think, several years now to develop a whole series of range improvement projects primarily around improving and protecting water and spring sources, as well as developing and repairing some wells, and also extending and replacing some existing pipeline. And the purpose really of all this is to better distribute their cattle on their three allotments, which essentially run from salt wells in the San Mountain area across Dixie Valley and into the south end of the Clan Alpine Range. Again, this is a project that we provided scoping comment on, generally in support of the project. We did ask the BLM to be mindful of not only our master plan, which I think the project is consistent with, but also our water management plan, and that any improvements or new water developments are consistent with state water law. Again, Chairman, what we're advocating here is support for the proposed action, and we have some specific comments on their analysis throughout. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have on our specific comments.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management on the Preliminary Environmental Assessment for the Binge Creek Ranch Range Improvements Project.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Any letters you want to pull out? So we'll move to nine, old business. We'll start with A, which is amendment of the memorandum of agreement between Churchill County and the State of Nevada Department of Veterans Services for the use of the office space in the Churchill County Annex Building. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Barbie, for the record, with the development of the Central Nevada Health District, we are looking for office space in the annex that we can utilize for those positions that we're bringing up as we're standing that up. We believe this to be, obviously per previous conversations, temporary office space for the organization. We contacted the Director of Veterans Affairs and identified the issue that we had in that conversation. He identified that they were good with just utilizing the reception area and one of those offices. And as such, this is an agreement, an updated agreement reflecting that verbal conversation that both veterans and the county staff were good with. Thank you.
Any questions from border staff? Jim, do you know if they have someone here now?
That position is currently open, so there is not anyone in there right now, but they are advertising the position and hope to have someone hired soon.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amendment to the memorandum of agreement with the State of Nevada Department of Veterans Affairs and to authorize the county manager to execute.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next, we have B, adoption of Resolution 24-2023, terminating the state of emergency in Churchill County due to the threat of flooding. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution terminating the state of emergency declared on March 2 of 2023 due to the threat of flooding. Churchill County, the City of Fallon, TCID, and Bureau of Reclamation worked mostly together to resolve all of the issues related to impending flooding. As the board is well aware, the county did great efforts in creating the Big Birm, as well as an expansion of the Weir Project. At this point in time, the threat of flooding has reduced to manageable levels, and all the data indicates that the threat of flooding has been mitigated completely at this point in time. And so I'd ask that you adopt Resolution 24-2023, terminating the state of emergency. I do think, and thank you for all of the hard work from the county employees who worked on this project as an order.
Any questions from border staff? Public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 24-2023, terminating the state of emergency in Churchill County due to the threat of flooding.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution 24-2023, resolution terminating the state of emergency in Churchill County, Nevada, due to the threat of flooding. And I'd like to thank all the county employees. They did a great job. Next, we have C, under old business, which is final approval of a real estate purchase agreement for property located at 2255 Casey Road, Fallon, Nevada, assessors parcel number 008-361-11. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Joe Sanford, again, for the record. This board had previously approved a purchase agreement for 2255 Casey Road, which is commonly known as the Casey Road Mobile Home Park. At that time, we were still awaiting an appraisal on the property. That appraisal was completed and received. It set the value of the property at $425,000. That is the offered price to purchase the property. And so at this time, I'd ask that you finalize your confirmation for the purchase of this property and direct the county manager to sign any of the appropriate paperwork required to complete the purchase. It is scheduled to close either this Friday or Monday is the last day pursuant to the contract, but I believe everyone is aiming for this Friday. Any of the barriers, as far as I know, have been recovered. We had an issue with some of the mobile home standards because they were substandard housing, but the Department of Manufactured Housing has worked with us to resolve those issues, and so we are all set to close.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase agreement for the property located at 2255 Casey Road, Fallon, Nevada, APN 008-361-11, and to direct the county manager to sign all necessary documents to complete the purchase.
And I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next, 10, I think we scratched from the agenda. Pam, is that correct?
No.
Jim? Oh, we still have that, I'm sorry.
New business age.
Oh, new business age.
I was in confusion. We weren't going to go into closed session, correct? Or we were? Oh. Okay, then I had it screwed up. I apologize. I thought we would go straight to approval. Okay, so we will go into closed session, sorry.
So, can I get a motion to go to closed personal session pursuant to NRS 288.220?
I move to transition to closed personal session pursuant to NRS 288.220.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. We'll move to closed session.
This conference will now be recorded.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order, and we'll begin with New Business A, which is ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between Churchill County and the Churchill County Sheriff's Deputies Association, Deputies and Sergeants Unit. Joff?
Good afternoon. For the record, Joff Stark, Human Resources Director for Churchill County, and also I have Sergeant Paul Loop here, who's the president of the Deputies and Sergeants Association. And we're here today. Glad to be able to come forward. We have successor agreements to the CBAs for both the deputies and the sergeants. Overall, we got started late on those negotiations this year, but we finished them pretty quickly. Not having started till pretty much close to the end of June, we were able to come to a tentative agreement last week. And I believe the association, I was notified yesterday that they had ratified it, so we brought it to the board this afternoon. I would say both sides really negotiated in good faith, again, to reach a new agreement. And as indicated, we did come down to a two-year deal with, basically, we have 6% increases in each of the years. That first year has a perjury reduction, and then the second year has a full 6% increase for them. We believe that second year would serve as a general increase and then also bring the covered employees up to market, which has really been the county's philosophy with our employees, is to bring them up to market. Again, life insurance, we've extended that to those employees, and we're also looking into that for the rest of our employees in the amount of $50,000 of term life insurance. And so we're taking a look at that as well. And not a whole lot of other changes. We have a sergeant FTO that'll get a 5% increase when they're doing FTO duties. We upped the educational incentive a little bit. And also, the county is going to cover health insurance for both years of the deal. There were some other changes in it, but those really don't have any fiscal impact, just more processes and that sort of thing that we'll be dealing with. But really, I think it's a fair deal, and glad that Paul was able to be here this afternoon. And I guess if you have any questions, I'll take those, and Paul can also answer questions or make comments if you like.
Any questions from border staff? Sergeant, do you have anything to add?
I just want to reiterate how grateful we are that the county and everybody was able to come together on this agreement for the two-year. able to come together on this agreement for the two-year. As always, it's interesting to see how the entire negotiations go, and even more interesting when you bring in third parties that are doing the majority of the negotiating for you. So that was a whole new avenue for us. So it was interesting, and hopefully we can continue to work as one unit as a county goes.
Thank you. Any public comment? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the negotiated collective bargaining agreement between Churchill County and the Churchill County Sheriff's Deputies Association, Deputies and Sergeant Unions, effective for fiscal years 2024 and 2025.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Next, in new business, we have B, approval to begin planning and solicit contracts for the conversion of unused space in the old jail to an evidence vault for the Sheriff's Department. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record. What we're requesting is a direction. We're looking at a, and this actually should be, topic should be more inclusive in terms of what we're looking at, and I don't know, Joe can advise us if we can add this on, but the idea would be, in lieu of the design that we were working on that would attach to the sheriff's office, we would utilize the old jail space in the existing courthouse with modifications as directed by the sheriff related to the security of evidence and, and the secure files, to use that as the evidence locker vault, because we have no other usage for that space that makes sense, and we believe this makes sense. And then the second component of this, which Joe's got to advise, would be to go to some level of design and renovation on the building that's located on the corner of A and 95, which is the L-shaped building, on the south end of that to make three, I believe, interview rooms and a conference room in that space that would be newly furnished for the sheriff's office, with the north end continuing to be intended to be used for future development for the public defender's office, and then also the, the full reclamation, renovation of the exterior of the building to make it look more modern and like a part of the court justice complex. Is that doable, Joe? Can that be added in? That was the intent.
So, so that can be discussed. I would just note for the record, any contract that actually gets solicited or-
Correct.
It will come back before this board for actual approval at this point, and this discussion is largely, I think, to address-
Direction.
Direction from the board as to how they'd like proceeding as far as conversion of, of space and, and the needs of the sheriff's office.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
So do we need to modify the recommended action, or no?
I would.
If you just include that you're directing me to look at the additional interview slash office space and conference room, that's good enough for me, or, or that I get the intent, so I don't get over the tip of my skis.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the actual motion needs to be changed, just if there's going to be some discussion in terms of how you would like to see the, the county's policy in using space, unused space, specifically the old jail, then we can proceed from there.
And Miles, if you could just add that L-shaped building into there for the sheriff? And I apologize to the sheriff for not discussing this earlier, but we've had our discussion. Thank you.
As well do I.
So any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to direct SAP to begin planning and solicit contracts for the conversion of unused space in the old jail to an evidence vault for the sheriff, as well as look into modifying the L-shaped building on A Street for interview rooms.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, and we will come up with another name, sheriff, for that building. It's just, so far, I think we're just going to call it the L-shaped. Next, we'll move to new business C, reappointment of Jim Coran to the Churchill County Advisory Board to manage wildlife.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record, I bring forward the recommendation for a reappointment of Jim Coran for a three-year term starting August 1st of 2023 and concluding July 31st of 2026, to continue in the positive, good service that has been previously provided.
Any comments or questions from border staff? Public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to reappoint Jim Coran to serve a three-year term on the Churchill County Advisory Board to manage wildlife, effective August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2026.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next, we have new business D, approval of a joint funding agreement with the US Geological Survey, USGS, for the Carson River Basin groundwater levels and water quality monitoring in the amount of $9,300 for fiscal year 2024 and $9,750 for fiscal year 2025. Julie?
There we go. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Julie Guerrero for the record. I am bringing before you approval of a joint funding agreement with USGS for essentially continuation of monitoring groundwater levels and water quality monitoring. The project has been known over the years by a couple of different names, and, but it's essentially continuation of monitoring that we've had in place for over 20 years with USGS. In fact, USGS has been monitoring in the, the Newlands since the start in 1903, so they have a lot of ongoing data collection. The program was previously known under the name of the La Houghton Valley Water Level and Quality Monitoring Program. It's a joint partnership between Churchill County, USGS, and the Carson Water Subconservancy District, and every couple of years, USGS reapplies for funds through Carson Water Subconservancy District, and then presents the county with a new funding agreement, which is what you have in front of you. The, USGS approached the county in January to let us know of their intent to reapply for funds through CWSD, and partly why this one has been renamed the Carson River Basin Groundwater Level and Water Quality Monitoring is because they sort of folded in other projects that have to do with the Carson River into this one, which is inclusive of the middle Carson and Douglas County. Now, the projects still maintain their own integrity and their own objectives, and so the water quality and monitoring that's going on in Churchill County remains, and that will not change. So we knew about this in January, so I requested the funds under the same line item in the Water Resources Budget during the budgeting process for fiscal year '24. So the funds were granted and are available in there, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the joint funding agreement with the USGS for the Carson River Basin Groundwater Level and Water Quality Monitoring Program.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next, we have new business E, approval of various job descriptions for public works, planning, and the clerk treasurer's office. Joff?
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, Joff Stark, Human Resources Director. As we are rolling into the new fiscal year, we did, the board did approve some new job descriptions for this fiscal year. I'm kind of rolling those out little by little, and several of those are at today's meeting. We're looking for approval for job descriptions for some new positions. One is the planning technician, one is the senior deputy clerk treasurer, another one is the senior cemetery maintenance worker. At this point, I'm going to pull off the senior fleet services mechanic only because I need to talk with the road supervisor. I think we're, we're going to, might change the title of that position, so we want to get that accurate before we get it approved. And then we also have a couple revisions to job descriptions that we'd been looking at previously, and that's for the deputy clerk treasurer and the deputy clerk to the board. In the end, none of these will have any budgetary impact, because we're not asking to change the pay grades, which were already approved in the budget. We're just trying to get job descriptions that are accurate for those positions.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to, one, approve new job descriptions for planning technician and senior deputy clerk treasurer, and, two, approve revised job description for deputy clerk slash treasurer and deputy, deputy clerk to the board.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you, Joff.
I just need to add, there was one position that was not included in the motion when it was written up, and I apologize for that. We also have the senior cemetery maintenance worker that we would need approval for that job description.
I move to approve the new job description for senior cemetery maintenance worker.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Next is new business F, ratification of a commercial real estate purchase agreement for property at 270 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $495,000. Jim, or Joe?
I can kind of lead it off, because I can give a little bit of the background of what we're working through here. We've had communications very recently with the governor's office, and there are some concerns about some of the funds that have been awarded to the county and working through a clawback process. So, and that in combination with looking at the difficulties of the award of $1.6 million for the construction of a new Central Nevada Health District facility, it became apparent that we may need to look at other options. We are utilizing this as part of that, looking at other options. This is a little over 10,000 square feet property on Main Street, three stories of basement, single floor, and upstairs with an additional two-story, what would be no more than a storage building, but probably roughly between 8,000 and 10,000 square feet, somewhere in there, located behind the building, the, the building that would be the office area for Central Nevada Health District. And then there are also two dirt lots located behind that we would be able to approve, utilizing the grant funds to make parking for staffing. So this would be the one-stop shop, which would combine social services, Central Nevada Health District across the board. So in the purchase of this, this is roughly around $50 a square foot in the purchase, not counting the storage in the back, which, you know, office space currently is going in excess of $200 a square foot, so we feel like this is a, a great way to help move things forward. There will be some modifications, which the grant funds will be utilized to make those modifications on the building. And then generally, the building is in fantastic shape, and so it'll be paint and flooring or flooring redone.
Any questions, comment from staff?
No, just ask that you adopt this purchase agreement. We will have to come back once a appraisal is complete for your final approval, similar to our past agreements.
Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to ratify the purchase agreement for the property located at 270 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $495,000.
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next, we have G, new business would be appointment of Alan Colt, Chris Spross, Gary Fowkes, and Sean Richardson to serve the board of directors of the Fallon Golf Course Inc. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record, before I get into the, the appointment, I think I need to give a little bit of background, because there's been communications going around via email, that there's definitely some confusion around what we're trying to do here. Matter of fact, I think it starts out with what's happening to the golf course. So to give a little bit of background, since I think the two of you and myself are new to this conversation, the golf course was purchased back in 2012 or 2013. There was some iteration of management in between there in 2017. In 2017, an agreement was reached between the county and a group of folks creating the, the Fallon Golf Course LLC and bylaws that created a five-person board. I went to a golf course meeting to discuss the inability of qualifying for the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act funds, which at one point we thought would be a great resource to be able to utilize on the golf course. That fund is controlled by the Bureau of Land Management, as we've previously discussed. That is not controlled by Churchill County. There seems to be some confusion there, so I want to be on the record that the Bureau of Land Management National Office, through their executive board committee, has identified that the golf course would not be eligible for Snipluma funds, even though we put it on our Snipluma Fund priorities list. So clarification number one. Secondary, after that, or at that meeting, they were approaching me, representing the county, that they needed their parking lot paved, and could we add that to the cost of putting in the water plant. I said, we won't have paving down to the water plant, and those wouldn't be connected, and furthermore, we don't have funding for the water plant. We're trying to, to look for funding for that. But after that meeting, that got me to thinking, I need to have a better understanding of how the golf course is organized, functions, and works. And so through that process and working with Joe, who I think was involved in working with Alan Colt, who was the CFO of Churchill County at the time, to create the, the bylaws and the agreement between the two organizations. In that agreement, it outlines that there are five board members serving to benefit, you know, golf and, and the sports of golf in the community, and goes into, you know, the terms are, I think, two years with a re-up option by the board itself for two years. And that basically, overall, they're running to benefit the community and having access to golf, and it's an important component of our community that we have a lot of support for in our community. So in doing that, it also had reporting requirements. The reporting requirements that I was able to find, working with the clerk's office, had never been met, adjusted, achieved. I had a meeting with Alan and Marty, both talking about those, and they recognized that, and Alan was quick to provide financial reports, updating basically the status of the golf course and everything there. So I thought that had clarified everything, but when I saw the email just at the start of this meeting, there seems to be continued confusion by folks affiliated with the board. Part of that is the confusion, is that the county commission, who is in charge of making those appointments, has only in the time between now and 2017, I think is when this was created, identified two appointments that were made to that board. So effectively, there are two folks that are currently serving on that board, no others. There are lots of folks that have been at the table and been working diligently to benefit the golf course, but they've never been appointed. So that's why we're trying to bring this appointment process forward. Additionally, the county did not have anyone represented on the five-person board as outlined in the agreement, and because of their concerns about construction, which is one of the documents that hasn't been provided, which I believe Alan is working on with Marty and the other folks, which is a capital improvement list of basically how, what things they want to see fixed, what things they want to improve in the golf course. So I think that's under process. But since that was such a focus, I thought it made sense to recommend Chris Spross, who is our public works director, has a twenty-something years in construction, as well as Gary Fowkes, who has twenty-something years in construction, are both folks that utilize the golf course and are actively engaged in the golf course. So recognizing that, currently, you have Tom, and I'd asked Alan to help me, what's his, I don't have my notes, and Katanowski-
Katanowski.
Is currently on the board, as well as Brian Byrd, who was appointed, I believe, a year ago or two years ago, somewhere in there. And so Brian Byrd hasn't actively been- And so Brian Byrd hasn't actively been participating, but Sean Richardson has in his stead. Therefore, we're bringing forward, long story to get to this ending, the recommendation to have Alan Kolt appointed to the board, along with the two county representatives of Gary Fowkes and Chris Spross, and then appointing Sean Richardson in Brian Byrd's position to serve with Tom and create your five-person board. In reviewing the documents of the bylaws, I think there are some bylaw changes that are necessary. One of the things is it says that all net profits from the operations of the golf course will be returned to the county yearly. There are, I think, $200,000 sitting in a CD, and I don't think that it makes sense that you would do that because they need funds to operate. And I think they need to identify and develop this capital improvement plan that would be tied to the funds that they're holding in a CD. So there's some things there, which I'm hoping that now that they would have a fully-appointed board, if you approve, they would go back and go through those things, bring forward recommendations for changes. As this works, the Golf Course Board LLC would basically make recommendations through approval in their process for bylaw changes, and then the commission would have to codify or approve those recommended changes. So that would come back to the commission. So with that, that's why we're bringing forward these three recommendations to complete a full board of the golf course. Thank you.
Joe, do you have anything to add?
I'll just note for folks who are going to be on the boards and be looking at bylaw changes, this is a 501(c)(3) organization. It was designed that way. A significant portion of the creation of a 501(c)(3) for a golf course operation is that the funds are tied to the county entity in a certain way. They don't have to come back every year exactly, but they have to stay within either county fund or advancing the game of golf itself. And so when those bylaw changes get created, this county, the county will review those. I'll help review those and make sure that we don't jeopardize the 501(c)(3) status in any way.
And they have to follow the open meaning law too, correct?
That is part of the bylaws, yes.
Any comments or questions for border staff? Alan, do you have anything to add? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Alan Kolt and Gary Fowkes to the Board of Directors of the Fallon Golf Course Inc. With terms expiring December 31, 2023, and to appoint Chris Spross to the same board with the term expiring on December 31, 2024, and Sean Richardson to fill a unexpired term ending January 18, 2024.
I second that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved. H has been scratched from this. It went with G. So we'll move next to I, which is approval of additional $450 per week in standby pay for the district attorney, public defender, and justice of the peace assigned to cover weekend court hearings pursuant to AB 518. Jeff?
For the record again, Joff Stark, Human Resources Director for Churchill County. Here this afternoon, as stated in the agenda report, a bill was passed by the legislature at the end of the legislative session, which is AB 518. That bill provided the counties, including Churchill County, with $450 per week for standby pays. Now, it's required to have weekend court. We've been working to try and make sure we've got those covered with attorneys, with the district attorney's office, the public defender, the justice of the peace, and other staff as well. So we've done that for about a year now, and now the legislature has provided some funding for that. This would be an increase. Currently, the county pays $400 for that duty. This would be an additional $450. That money would go both towards salary as well as perse benefits for the folks who are covered, since that is a perceval rate. This would also now include the justice of the peace, which up till now we have not included. And so that, those funds would be used to pay a callback or a standby pay for him as well. And we're hopeful this will continue to go forward. It's, I think it's worked out fairly well to have coverage, but this will help kind of offset some of those costs. And the attorneys, the staff who are on call for those weekend court duties have to basically remain on call for the weekend. So even if the court only meets once, one day during the weekend, they still have to be available the whole weekend in case they are called in. So I guess if you have any questions, I could answer those or defer to other folks as I might need to.
Any questions from border staff? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of an additional $450 per week standby stipend to the district attorney, public defender, and justice of the peace assigned to cover weekend court hearings.
I second that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved. Thanks, Joff.
Thank you.
Next, a new business is J. Approval of Resolution 23-2023 Adopting and Certifying Churchill County's Tax Rate for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Sherry, you can stay up here. It's Sherry's turn now. You can talk later. This was
On the tax rate. Yeah, on the tax rate, minor, minor. Now, this was on the agenda for the last meeting, and we had to pull it because we hadn't got certification from the Department of Taxation. We received that certification, so now we're asking you to do a resolution, adopting and approving the tax rate that you've already approved during the budget process. And this is just housekeeping, and it just needs to be sent to the Department of Taxation. Thank you.
Any questions for border staff? Public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 23-2023 Certifying the Combined Tax Rate for Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2023 and Ending June 30, 2024, as submitted.
I'll second that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved. I'll read the resolution here. Resolution 23-2023, a resolution in accordance with the provisions of Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 361.460, certifying the combined tax rate for the levy of taxes beginning July 1, 2023, specifically committing and designating the number of cents of each $100 of property levy for each fund remaining until a similar board action is taken to change the commitment levels and other matters properly related thereto. Next, we'll move to the consent items. Anything you want to pull out?
No.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent items?
I move to approve the consent items.
I'll second that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved. Do we have anything to consider for any future agenda items?
I don't think so, no.
Jim, you have anything? Next, we'll move to 14, Commissioner and Management Staff Reports. I'll start. So had a LaHawn Conservation District meeting recently, and this week, we also had a Parks and Rec meeting, first one in a while, and got to meet a new member, which was great. So, Miles?
I had a Central Nevada Regional Water Authority meeting last week, and I also got to meet with Senator Jackie Rosen on July 6 about affordable housing here in the community.
Jim?
Just continue to work towards trying to get a reimbursement of the 4.7 million dollars from BOR. We have additional meetings set up in the future, and we've been working steady with Rosen's office, who is intimately engaged in that. So, you know, we continue to be hopeful, but we need to get that money pulled back because it definitely is going to impact infrastructure decisions as we move forward. Thank you.
Sherry?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Joe?
Just continue to work on several land deals that are going on in the county, which has generally been good. I'm sure you've been approving several of them, but you can see that there's a lot of work going in to make sure all of the various departments have a place to be and services appropriate to them.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Is it working? All right. So I want to take up a few minutes of your time, and I apologize for that. I hope that you guys don't just kick me out. Part of the reason is, is because we've had a lot of projects we've been working on for a number of years come to fruition over the last couple of weeks, and so I wanted to give you guys Sorry. Couple of quick things of note that aren't a project, but they were fun to do. We had people go down to the library and work with the kickoff, the reading program. So we took down our side-by-side, one of our patrol cars and our crime scene investigation trailer, and we let kids kind of meander through it, turn on the lights, play with the siren, to kind of sit in the seats and kind of break down some barriers that exist because parents tell the kids that if you don't behave, cops are going to come and arrest you. And so we try and fight against that. It was fun for the guys. We got some new people to go out there, and it was a lot of fun. We also worked with WNC as part of their youth program, and so we put our guys over there to help them with some crime scene processing and just interaction with the kids. And we're going to continue to work on those programs because we think they're beneficial to the overall community. Now to one of the big ones that we've been working on for, I would say since 2018, is when we first started working on this, and that's a long-term MOU with the tribe. And so we've been working with Joe to the point where I think we've all just really tired of this project because it's driven on for so long. And some of the process that we've had is we've had a temporary MOU in place which allowed us to go on to the reservation and/or their tribal lands and assist them in the event that they needed backup. Because without that MOU in place, we can't go on to those tribal lands to help the law enforcement officers that are there because of the extreme liability that places on the county, as well as on the officers in our agency. And I've spoken about that before this board on a couple of occasions. And so for the last year, we haven't had an active MOU at all with them. And so what that's done is that's placed our status as being able to dispatch for them at risk because it's not CGS compliant. So I've been pushing on the tribe to make sure we can get that MOU going. And it seems like we'd reached an agreement, and then they would kick it back for a couple of word changes. Couple of word changes here, a couple of changes there, to the point where it was very frustrating. It was putting a lot of things at risk. And so we had a conversation where we need to really move this thing forward. We need to stop with the commas here, the whatever's there, and just move forward if it doesn't change the content. And so ultimately, we did that. And so what this process has looked like is part of that was to ensure that we had the ability to go on and pull their officers out if they needed help, right? Because that's, nobody wants to sit and listen to the radio if somebody gets hurt when you can go in and help them. But the other part of that is, if they make an arrest on a member of their tribe that's just strictly tribal code, they have to take them someplace else. So they were taking them to Story County, they were taking them to Yarrington, they were taking them to Reno. What that does is it reduces the law enforcement force that's actively patrolling and functioning on the reservation, which means that their officer is going to be calling for backup more frequently, which means we can't go out there more frequently. And so we need to do something different with that. When they were getting released from court, sometimes they were being stuck over in the other counties, and so the officers were having to go back and forth, sometimes with no sleep or little sleep. And so it was placing the officers at risk. And so part of the discussion that we had, starting back in late 2018, right before I got elected the first time, was how do we solve that problem? Because they wanted to book them into our jail. And conversations with the DA were like, "You can't do that because we have no MOU." And BIA at that time told us that if we were allowing them to book them into our jail, then we had to open it up to the entire BIA system. Or that meant that if we were taking a troublemaker from Ogalala, Nebraska, it didn't matter what tribe, we had to take them into our facility because we had to sign a contract with BIA. I balked at that and fought that because I said, "I don't want troublemakers from another community brought here and ultimately released into our community with no real ties to our community." And so we didn't sign that contract, and we worked with them, but they had approved a similar agreement in Arizona. And so we kind of capitalized that, and we pushed it forward. So I've been in front of their commission, I don't know how many times, testifying about this. Their concerns were, "Are we going to try and expand our borders into their borders? Are we going to try and take over law enforcement?" And the answer's always been, "No, that's not our intent." We recognize our sovereignty. We just want to be able to assist them as needed. And I apologize if I'm running long-winded. I just want to give you guys the background as to where we're at with it. So ultimately, last week, we met again with the commission. And again, I want to thank Joe for his tireless work on this, but we did meet in front of the commission last week, and again testified to the same thing. We got that approved, that MOU approved. And so they will be paying us $55,000 a year for dispatch services. So we'll have that contract in place, and then they will be paying us $100 a day for a booked inmate into our facility. And they'll be staying no longer than 72 hours in our facility, and then they'll have to transfer them out to a longer-term facility. But it gives us the ability to meet CGS requirements. It gives us the ability to ensure that an inmate that they bring in doesn't sit in our jail for longer than the constitution allows them to and that they're maintaining some form of constitutionality on that. So that's been the big issue that we've been working on. And I signed that agreement this morning, and I asked for our legal to review it again today before it gets sent back to the tribe. So that's the big one that we've been working on. Again, I apologize if I took too long to board you guys. The other thing that we had was we met with BLM and US Fish and Wildlife. And so on the BOR lands that are surrounding our area, if there's an issue with law enforcement that needs to be dealt with, we've historically dealt with BLM because BLM has done the law enforcement stuff for BOR. They work some kind of a horse trade, and that's their words, not mine, so don't shoot the messenger on that. But US Fish and Wildlife will now be taking over some of the law enforcement duties for BOR lands from BLM. How that's going to look and how that's going to work, I don't know. We met with both of their supervisors, and they don't know. This was done at a much higher level, and so right now, they have a US Fish and Wildlife person that's here, that's been in Nevada for a while, but he does not know all of this area. And so we've met with him a couple of times to try and figure out exactly what they're going to be doing and what his role will be, other than out at the Stillwater Wildlife Refuge. The issue being that as a federal officer, he doesn't have the abilities to arrest under NRS, and so we don't have a current MOU with them, and so we've been talking to them about the need for an MOU, some kind of an agreement if they come across an offender that with state charges. And so we'll keep you updated on that. We met with the Cantaloupe Festival last week. For the first time, they had invited us down to go meet with them. And so myself and a couple of my staff went down and met with them. We talked to them about making sure that they had the proper permitting for liquor licenses so that we don't end up in the same fiasco we did last year, and where feelings were hurt and things were pushed. And so they said that they were going to be working on that, and in fact, they have worked on that. So we got some of the permits this week into our office. The other part of that was traffic control because we have AYSO going on, FYFL going on at the same time, and Friday Night Football all at the same time that we're having the events at the Cantaloupe Festival, and so it's going to max out some parking. The concern that we had, just as we did last year, was making sure that people don't park along Scheckler. The problem for that is if they park along Scheckler, it creates no corridor for people to pull off the side of the road if an emergency vehicle needs to go down that road. In addition to that, we have the concerns about potentially inebriated or intoxicated people walking down a roadway, not dressed appropriately for after-dark travel on the roadway. And so we've been meeting with NHP in regards to that. NHP has not been approached by the Cantaloupe Festival for any sort of permitting. They were invited to a meeting, but it was at such late notice that they couldn't get there. And so we have another meeting with them tonight where we will re-discuss some of those options and some of the stuff that we've learned, and try and come up with a game plan for parking people in the back and how we can avoid them parking along Scheckler. I had sent the county manager a message, but I know he's been busy in regards to maybe having a conversation about shutting down a portion of minors to through traffic so we can get rodeo contestants back and forth across that and foot traffic across from the south parking lot to minors. And so I'm hoping that we can have discussions about that with him and Gary Fowkes and Jesse in the future.
Jesse will be your contact because they've utilized that process before. So they kind of have a routine, and I think, but I didn't want to weigh in because I don't have all the details, so it was going to be, I need you to talk to Jesse. But I think they, we actually had a staff member that was controlling traffic in that.
If we shut it, if we shut that down, then I think we can get search and rescue to play with inside the boundaries that we set up. So I think we can help with that, and I just wanted to make sure we had everybody's agreements on.
Yeah, it's going to be more complicated than that because that's going to be where contestants are coming in and exiting as well. So, but I don't know, you want to talk to Jesse?
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if we could do a couple of conversations to set up some lanes for horse traffic and the foot traffic lane. So, search and rescue's been busy. They had a rescue out at the lake, which I thought was great. They've been out on multiple searches for some lost people that have gone out in the desert and not realized how hot it was and have not returned. We continue to do some training with the water at the lake, and so I have We continue to do some training with the water at the lake, and so I have people right now up at A-Lake with Endow doing some more training so that we can get fully up to speed so we can make sure that people are safe at the water. We have been struggling at the sheriff's office with the email issue for a little while now, and our emails are not going through to people. They're going to spam, and so I've been working with Logically and Cullen in regards to that because we're not being able to function truly as a sheriff's office because they're not going through to the state, they're not going through to private entities. And so I don't know what the fix is, but we're working diligently with them to try and solve it because it's making functioning...
Phones.
Phones, that was my next item on the list. Yeah, without being able to talk to somebody because we can't call out, not being able to email somebody, it's made our job, which is 90% communication, very difficult. And so we are working with them, but we're trying to figure out what the issue is. The phones went out the other day, and so we are working to try and solve some kind of an issue with that. We have upgraded everything. We can upgrade at our system. We got the new recorder in. We've had, we just paid a bunch of money to have a guy come in and take a look at that again because we want to make sure that it's not on our end, that our equipment is up to speed. And it's not. It's definitely our provider's information, and CCCom says it's AT&amp;T, and it's up near Sacramento. So I have to believe them because they speak a language that I don't understand with technical stuff. So we do have the new recorder that we purchased through E911 Funds in and operational. We did have a discussion with that company because they did not, they were not forthcoming with some information that would have made it, would have made the purchase slightly different in regards to how our lines are coming into Churchill County with some of our copper lines. But it is up and operational, and it does provide us with a lot of resources we did not have before. So we're happy with that. We have a vendor in right now. One of the ongoing issues that we've had for about the last, well, for a long, long time, is that we have not been able to be seen on our computers. Our cars were not visible. And so this has gone on for probably eight, nine-plus years. And so we've been working on it diligently for the last four and a half years to try and resolve that issue. We've bought new routers and other pieces of equipment, and it got to the point where I had a conversation with the vendor of either you fix it, or I'm yanking it out of my car and I'm sending it back to you, and you can give me my money back because it's not working. And so they sent a guy out here. We did have to pay a little bit to get him out here, but they are working on it right now to get that up and operational. That's about as far as I've got. If there's any questions, I would be willing to answer any questions you might have.
And Sheriff, you know this year, the jamboree's not happening.
Yes, we were told that, sir. But they're having SYFL football games all day Saturday.
So they're going to do that?
So they start in the morning, and then they run until the evening time with that game. And so what happens is the Cantaloupe Festival was looking at talking about using that parking lot as overflow parking, and they just have people walk back and forth, but they can't do that if it's obviously being utilized by another vendor. And so Friday night's the same thing with Friday Night Football happening there. And so their concern is that people will leave the football game and walk over to the Cantaloupe Festival, which is good for the Cantaloupe Festival. It's just bad for public safety if they're walking across the highway back and forth, trying to get them and some small kids back and forth across the highway. So we're trying to figure out the best route that we can to ensure their safety.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any other questions for me? All right. Thank you for your time, and I do apologize for taking so much of it.
Thank you.
Linda?
Secured and unsecured property tax bills were mailed out and hitting mailboxes probably the last week and this week, and those anxious taxpayers are keeping us really busy down in our office. Other than that, I'm just doing some software conversion still.
Pam? So we'll move next to our last public comment.
Lauren Moore, for the record. I am with Western Nevada College. I have the privilege of overseeing our commercial driving program. I'm mostly just here to thank the community for their support of that program. It would not be possible without the support of the community, including your patience with our student drivers as they take to the roads for the very first time, and we certainly appreciate that. And I just want to share some of the successes with the program. We're wrapping up a grant cycle. We've done some review of what's going on with our students now that they've graduated, and we've got some really fantastic news that I wanted to share with you, and thank you for your support in making it all possible. So we've been able to train 120 students since October 2021. 13% of those were veterans, and 15% of them were receiving public assistance prior to completing the program. 93% of them paid nothing out of pocket to attend the program. 34% of them went from being completely unemployed to holding full-time jobs with families sustaining wages, an average wage of $30 an hour. Another 17% have received pay increases, and the remaining 49% were sent to us directly by local employers who really need this program to help meet their needs. Our students are working in construction, utilities, public service. They are employed here locally by a variety of companies, including Hawk Salt, Hiskett & Sons, SS Hurt Trucking, who actually helped start the program by donating the truck, as well as A&amp;K Earth Movers. And three of our former students serve the county directly as employees with the City of Fallon and the Churchill County Roads Department. So again, I just wanted to express my sincerest gratitude to the community for your support of this program. We're looking forward to continuing to serve even more students, and we're just really grateful that this incredible program is so well supported by the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to claims and payroll transmittals, and I skipped, and meetings adjourned. Thank you.